Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Echols.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Councilman Reed is absent today. We do have a quorum present. The meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to convene again today. Father, we thank you for this great city. Father, we thank you for those in attendance. Father, we also thank you for this grand opportunity, Father, to serve as decision makers in public service, Father. And we ask that you would cover us with your grace and mercy, Father God, and grant us the wisdom to make judicious decisions, Father God, that are for the benefit of this city as a whole and those that we represent in our respective districts, Father. And through it all, we will learn and be obedient in giving you the glory, the honor, and the praise for us. In Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on August 27.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of August 23 through the 29th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Confirmation to mayor.
Sheila Hurley and her staff, come up please, from Mental Health, CED. Ms. Ada Gregory is also with us. I'm blank this morning, sorry. Whereas mental and substance abuse disorders affect all communities nationwide, but with the commitment and support people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. In 2011, 2.3 million people aged 12 and older received specialty treatment for an illicit drug or alcohol use problem. And in the past year, 31.6 million adults aged 18 or older received mental health services on a new path toward improved health and overall wellness. Whereas the focus of National Recovery Month this September is to celebrate their journey. Recovery Month spreads the message that behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and that prevention works, treatment is effective, and people do recover. This is a message we need to spread far and wide. The impact of mental and substance use disorders is apparent in our local community, and an estimated close to a million people in Alabama are affected by these conditions. According to the 2011 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, in 2011, 21.6 million people aged 12 and older nationwide needed treatment for an illicit drug or alcohol use problem. 8.4 percent of people aged 12 and older. Of these 2.3 million, 0.9 percent of people aged 12 and older, and 10.8 percent of those who needed treatment received treatment at a specialty facility. Also in 2011, out of the 45.6 million Americans aged 18 or older who had any mental illness in the past year, only 31.6 million received mental health services in the past year. Through Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental and/or substance use disorders, which can lead more people into needed treatment. Managing the effects of these conditions can help people achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. Whereas for 24 years, Recovery Month has worked to improve the lives of those affected by the mental and/or substance use disorders by raising awareness of these diseases and educating communities about the prevention, treatment, and recovery resources that are available. Therefore, I, Strom and Gotten, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2013 as National Recovery Month in the City of Gaston, and call upon our community to observe this month with compelling programs and events that support this year's observance. We must continue to concentrate on total recovery of the individual, and this is achieved when community agencies collaborate on physical, mental, and spiritual recovery.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We will have a special event coming up next week, and I'm going to let Ms. Ava tell you all about that.
September the 10th, over at Convention Hall at noon. We would love to have all of you there. Mr. Bob Wim will be there. He's from the State Department of Mental Health. He's over the Substance Abuse Unit. I'd love to have each and every one of you there with any questions you have, or just to show some support. And we're also going to have a multimedia presentation that's going to be the one that's leading up to the one in March. I want your feedback, because it's time now to make changes. Our children from Gaston City Schools are on that video. Very proud. It's went all over the nation. Thank you very much.
Avery, give us that date again.
It's next Tuesday. It's the 10th.
It's high?
Noon. I'm very sorry. But noon.
Next Tuesday.
Mm-hmm. Love to have all of you there. You'll be fed.
I'd like to ask Denise Cooy from EMA to come up, please. Whereas national preparedness month creates an important opportunity for every resident of Gaston to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, from natural disasters to potential terrorist attacks. Investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, our businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. The Gaston Etowah County Emergency Management Agency and other federal, state, local, private, and volunteer agencies are working to increase public awareness concerning the importance of preparing for an emergency and to persuade individuals to take action. Emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen of Gaston, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority by taking four simple steps. Get an emergency supply kit, make a family emergency plan, be informed about the types of emergencies that can occur in Gaston, and get involved with local preparedness organizations and efforts. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Strom and Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gaston, hereby proclaim September 2013 as National Preparedness Month in the City of Gaston, and encourage all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan.
There you go, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council, for doing this. September is National Preparedness Month, and it precedes our second tornado season, so it's a good time to be thinking about these things. Like you said, there's four things to remember. You need to be informed, know what your hazards are, make a plan which applies to your home, your workplace, your place of worship also. Get a kit, customize that kit for your needs, and don't forget your pets, babies, elderly. It's not just a generic kit. It needs to be customized to fit your needs. And get involved. And one way of getting involved, and I'd like to announce, we have a CERT class that begins at EMA on September the 24th. This class lasts for three weeks, two nights a week, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's absolutely free. You get the materials there furnished to you, and it's a real good way to be informed and to learn how to prepare to help your community as well as yourself. Thank you so much.
We have none today. Nine is a resolution authorizing agreement for Greater Gaston Housing Authority. This continues the community policing program in the seven public housing facilities for the next fiscal year. Under this agreement, the housing authority will reimburse the city for the hourly salary, excluding benefits, of five officers. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? This has been a real good program, and it's, I'm glad we're still into it. Any other discussion?
It has just turned some of our public housing completely around. I can remember when Myrtlewood was not a good place to be, and now it's one of the nicest, cleanest areas in our city, so it's really worked well.
Yeah, their slogan on most of their signs, that all of these housing developments says, "For the housing of choice, not last resort." So it has been a remarkable improvement over what we have experienced in years past.
Yeah, they have their own organization in each one of them.
That's right.
They police themselves.
Do a good job of it, too.
It's been a great program. Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Fairbanks Service for calibration of the scales at the transfer station. The amount is $550 per inspection. Repairs will be charged at the regular labor rate of $90 an hour straight time and $135 per overtime. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. We're going to do these twice a year. The first one's going to be, will be February this year, and the next one will be in August. And I think if we maintain those scales and keep them clean, we could probably cut down on some of the overtime money or the hourly rate we have to pay when we have to call them out. That's just my thought on the matter.
Mine, too, Johnny.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have a couple of resolutions I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. The first one is a resolution authorizing conveyance of property at 631 Turnitin Street to Louis V. Loveman in the amount of $800.
Second.
He's already paid the $800, so...
Those in favor...
Second to them.
You have a second. Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for approval, please.
Second. Any discussion?
This is an example of what we've encouraged everybody to do. This piece of property is next door to his home. It's where we baited a house. It's an empty lot that we've been having to keep the grass cut on. Now we're turning it over to someone who will keep the property up and enhance his own property. So if there's a lot next door to you and the city has control of it, please make us an offering. We will accept it.
Practically nothing.
Let's be clear about that, though. We, you know, and I appreciate what Councilman Stewart's saying, but, you know, for a good number of those properties, what you're purchasing is the city's ownership interest in those properties as opposed to buying them outright. So please be mindful, there may be an additional hurdle to go through in order to gain full ownership of any property that you're interested in. But to his point, please express an interest, and then you'll at least get started down the right path.
You can contact the clerk's office, and she'll guide you through the process. Sometime there are some strings to a piece of property that you can't get total title to, but she can guide you through that process.
They also have a right of redemption.
That's true. There's some strings. Anyway, I asked for approval on this resolution.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have another resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider, is authorizing agreement between the City of Gaston and Aldott for a right-of-way acquisition of a bridge replacement on South 11th Street at Black Creek.
Second. Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for approval, please.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is the bridge that really needs widening, and I understand they're going to widen it and put a sidewalk across it, too. It's down at Black Creek. Kids going to school use that thing, and it's a very dangerous little bridge right now. So anyway, this is a 20 percent match of the city, and Aldott is proceeding with this, so we're looking forward to seeing this taken care of right of way.
Yeah, but it's not going to be widened enough for four lane. That's...
No, not this time, but any improvement's going to be...
Oh, any improvement's going to be a big improvement, but I just wish we would go ahead on and, I don't know what we need to do, to request to widen it to a four lane, because eventually that street needs to be four-lane down through there with all the traffic going back and forth to the high school.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Engineer, what can we do, if anything?
To have the road four-lane?
To request the widening of that bridge, yes.
Yeah, we could do that to the state. I'm sure it has to do with traffic counts that are going across the bridge currently. It's just a project with a much bigger scope when you're talking about the additional right-of-way acquisition and possible displacement of the houses. But I do think, a while back, it was looked at, straightening out the curve that goes up the hill on South 11th Street. I just don't think it went further because of the current counts don't justify it. But we could continue to look into it.
How much traffic is on that South 11th?
How much traffic?
Yeah. A lot. Do a lot of kids go that way, or the most of them?
No, it, yeah, well, I've got a number in my head, but I don't want to misspeak without the file right in front of me. But yes, I mean, it is considerable amount of traffic. I want to say it's 1,200 cars a day, but I'm not positive about that number. Please don't hold it to...
Well, is that enough to justify four lane?
No, sir. 1,200 cars a day wouldn't. But again, we could look into it. It's just a much, like I say, and it's a much bigger scope. This bridge needs to be replaced immediately because of its current condition.
I was just going to say, that cuts the traffic down because of the curve and because of the narrow bridge. Had it, you know, if it was widened, then I'm sure we could get a whole lot more volume to go that route. But right now, people avoid it because of that.
Yeah, I can't argue that point.
Chad, did y'all do the traffic study during the school time on that?
Yes, sir.
That was done during school?
Yes, sir. It's been looked at multiple times. Yes, sir.
You just couldn't keep that number in your head, could you?
Yeah, I got a few things going on.
Yeah, widening the bridge, you know, would mean widening all of South 11th Street also.
That's right.
Especially all the way down to Titan Boulevard, Titan Parkway.
Yeah, and let me mention this, too. There is a project, a separate project, that we're looking at widening from Piedmont Cut Off back to Black Creek Parkway.
Piedmont Cut Off.
Yeah, it's a little side street past the soccer complex. But that portion really would be done for morning time traffic and football traffic.
Do you have a second to study for a four or five year period, or have since been relocated just in that time?
I imagine...
All that's happened since that block.
Right. I imagine that that's on file.
There's quite a bit of traffic, which helps that situation, even though it does need to be four-laned all the way. A lot of people go down I-59, I mean, 759. There's traffic backed up there every morning getting off. And a lot of them come to, you know, go by behind a steel plant on Hickory Street back there and cut through some of those side streets that come out right at the school. There's a lot of traffic coming that way as well.
Billy, I think he was talking about Piedmont Avenue instead of Piedmont Cut Off.
I hope he was.
That's what he was talking about, Piedmont Avenue.
When he said Piedmont Cut Off, I'm saying, boy, that's a long extension there.
That's Piedmont Avenue. It's about the first Second Street, top of that hill right there.
Yeah. It's a 759 workaround.
How about that? We finally got a 759 workaround. Thanks a chat.
Call.
Anyway, we're chasing rabbits around. We're getting the bridge replaced right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Gaston and ACOM Solutions for the purchase of software, hardware, maintenance, and training to enable the AS400 computer system to do its thing.
Second. If you want more in depth?
Well, there's a second, so...
You got a second?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion we approve?
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yeah, this is basically bringing the MIS department into the 21st century. When it comes down to printing, it's a laser printer, can print a number of documents that we now have to order and pay when we can start putting our own documents together and printing them. So it just, but it also enabled us to have a better system when it comes down to printing checks, too, and a more secure system when it comes down to printing checks. But it's basically just bringing us into the 21st century.
Also improves our efficiency in that department, too.
Right.
Just a few days ago, we were still keep hunting, so at least now we... I mean, seriously, I mean, it hadn't been but a few days. So hopefully, this is going to move us up. That's all.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Citizen request. Alice, where are you?
Hi.
Couldn't see you. You know the room.
Good morning. My name is Alice Thomas. I come to this council this morning with mixed emotions, anger, hurt, and frustration. My husband passed away on February the 12th. His services were given to the Gaston Memorial Funeral Home owned by Mario Jackson. But at some point, the mayor became involved in this situation and ordered a grave dug in the condemned section of cemetery without my permission or my knowledge. And my husband lay in a waterlogged grave until Tuesday, August 27th. I contacted the mayor several times. One time, he told me he was going to the chief and talked to him about the situation. Maybe we could get some charges of theft by deception. I talked to him another time. He said he was talking to some judge at the county, and he would get back with me. I talked with him another time. He told me to go down there and talk to Ms. Card. And Ms. Card sent me to the police department. The detective told me that Mario said I didn't pay him, and was nothing he could do about And I am so hurt. My children are hurt, the best thing that we had, we lost it. And for somebody to disrespect him and us to that extent, I don't understand. But I know that something needs to be done here in this city. I found out when I went to the police department, it'd take you two days to get a warrant. And if that's not antique, I don't know what is. When you come out of the police department, you got to go all the way around the building to get back in the building past the doors a lot. You have no special places for the elderly or the handicapped. This building is a fire hazard. You can't get out of here but one way. You're one way in and one way out. And I have never seen people take this kind of authority and disrespect you to that extent before in all the days of my appointed time. And I'm 82 years old. And I don't know what you all plan to do about it, but I hope that you do something, and nobody else has to suffer as me and my children have suffered. I've been up and down the street since February trying to get my husband's body exhumed and put in a decent place, which I got done last Tuesday. Thank you.
I'm going to have to speak up a little bit to clarify the issue. First of all, when her husband passed, they didn't have lots, and I did not order he be buried where he was buried. I did not order that at all. And that speaks, well, that speaks between you and the funeral home. That was a civil matter, not the mayor's call. I'm going to say what I got to say, and I'm being respectful. I understand when somebody passes. But anyway, he was buried where he was buried, and that was the situation between her and the funeral home. All I did was let our guys work on Sunday to get him buried. That's all the part I had in it. And then, he was going to be moved, and I also let our guys work again to help move him. But all the stuff between the lots, where he was put and where he ended up being at Forest Cemetery and all, that was between her and her funeral home. And the police couldn't do anything because it was a civil matter, is what they told me, if I'm not correct ye. And also, Ms. Card at court, and Ms. Thomas came to my office several times, but I couldn't make anybody do anything as far as carrying out what she wanted me to do.
You're back straight. I paid for it. I had two lots. Already paid for it, me and my husband.
She's come to the mic.
But you know that the money got lost, and Mario lost the money. Don't get your back straight.
Alice, Alice, come back to the microphone, please.
Time's up. Mr. Time's up.
Five minutes is up. Six up.
Next is remarks by the mayor and the council. Johnny, you want to start?
Yes, I will. I just want to remind everyone to go out this week and support your Titans football team. They did a pretty good job this week, I think. You know, they played pretty good. Just go out there and support them. And let everybody know, we're working now on the Oktoberfest in Alabama City, the Trick of Street on Wall Street. We're already working on the, I know it's a couple months away, but we're trying to line everything up for that. We've got the third Thursday, the third Saturday in this month. I forgot the date, but it starts at 6:00. We have free food, and this will be the last one for this year. You got to just come out and support us. That's all we got.
Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you, how did we do over the holidays, the Labor Day holiday weekend here in Gaston? Labor Day holiday weekend here in Gaston? Did we have a pretty civil, pretty quiet weekend? Did we, was it, give us a, give us a summary, if you don't mind of.
No one called me.
No one called you. So that's a, so that's a good report. If the chief didn't get a call, that's a pretty good report.
I will get our stats and everything, that comes out on my Wednesday stat that I have. So that's what we'll get over you of what.
Thank you. Thank you. But from all indications, you know, it was a pretty civil holiday and I, I think, we thank you for enjoying the holidays and being back here with us again today for our city council meeting. We had a lot of rain yesterday morning, to put it mildly. Black Creek, you know, center, you know, Piedmont, Gaston, you know, anywhere from two to four inches of rain fell in an hour and a half, two hours yesterday morning and it presented the city with some opportunities. I will be addressing some of those opportunities that we've had prevailing problems in the past, new issues and I understand, you know, I think we all understand that any time you have that amount of rain that falls in a, in a short period of time, you're gonna have some problems with flooding because we do know that some of our infrastructure and some of our drainage systems can't handle that, that, that much water in a short distance, in a short time period. But those issues that, that we've been addressing, particularly three in East Gaston, we will be addressing them to try, try to make sure that we get those resolved in a very quick and expedient manner. These are recurring problems, not new problems that have existed just, I mean, just have cropped up, but these are recurring problems and we'll, we'll be working on those, I assure you. Stroud Avenue project, I understand they'll have a contractors meeting next week. We will announce a community meeting next Tuesday once we finalize it, but we want all of the, the persons that are gonna be affected by the Stroud, the second phase of Stroud Avenue to be at that meeting so you can ask questions and be aware of, of what's gonna happen. But we will announce that meeting next Tuesday at council meeting. I'll just tell you, tentatively, it's gonna be next Thursday. But that's not for sure because we haven't met with the contractors yet to, to make sure that everything's going okay. But, but please stay tuned for that because that is another big project that's being sponsored by the city and the county, Cal and Parker, for us to alleviate some of the drainage problems that we do have in East Gaston. And that's all I have.
Oh, we have a TV celebrity here with us this morning and I'm gonna yield my time to Robert Avery and let him give us an update on his last two weeks, okay?
Okay.
You got it.
Oh, I got it though. I, I appreciate that, Bill. As you know, my pen is out of ink and I'm still trying to get the cramps out of my hand, but I'll give you that autograph after a while. No, I do would like, I, I really would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for their positive response. As you know, for the last few weeks I've been doing, I'm not sure what you call it, but we had the 50th anniversary of the March on Washington and I was very, very honored in participating in that march some fifty years ago and had the opportunity to, to go back to Washington the last couple of weeks to participate in the activities there. So it was nice to be in Washington for a few weeks, but it's great to be back home, so. Again, like I said, Bill, as soon as I can get the cramps out of my hand, I'll, I'll autograph your book for you. Okay.
Robert, you don't, you don't wanna tell.
He was on Channel Eight last night.
He was on every channel and, every network in, in the.
Well, that's bad news, but I just saw him out last night.
You don't wanna tell him that this last trip you made was lots easier than that first trip? You drove your own car this time, didn't you?
Well, from that standpoint, it, it was a lot easier, but it, it was a heck of a lot more work this time than it was the last time. I think I interviewed with every international media there was, thanks to my agent that's sitting over there. She hooked me up with the Japanese network, the Dutch, the French, the Spanish and Canadian and I'm not sure, that, yeah, but anyway, that's my agent over there. And as soon as I get through with one, she would call me and she'd say, okay, I got you another gig and, but I really appreciate it. It, it was interesting, it was nice. Like I said, there was a lot of activities going on, on in Washington for almost ten days, so it was just great and honored to be there to participate in them.
You got anything else?
No, I think you represented the Gaston well, Robert.
Thank you.
I guess Robert's through too.
He's, he's done.
He's tired.
Well, I, I do wanna say this, I take, I take no pleasure at all in, in knowing that, that Al Lingo chased you and Billy Home back in sixty-three.
He chased Billy Home.
He chased Billy Home.
I was in jail.
You were in jail.
I was in jail.
But, but I do appreciate you being out there. I do appreciate you being out there and those others who were there, I do appreciate that, I do appreciate it. We, we talked some upstairs about the, about the robotics program at Gaston City High School and we, we're very fortunate, our mayor has, has openly been a very strong advocate of career tech and robotics obviously is a component of career tech. And one, one thing I'd like to kind of draw some attention to is the South Best Competition that these young folks compete in each year. I think the, and I, and I may misspeak this, but the, the regional, I think, competition is in Talladega in November and then of course, if they place in the top three, I believe it is, they're allowed to, to go and participate at Auburn for the statewide competition. And, and why is this important? Well, for one thing, it involves our young people and, and anything that our young people are doing that's positive, we should, we should get behind it a hundred and ten percent. But secondly, one of the things I wanna kind of highlight is that this is one of the competitive areas that serves to, to, to give us a competitive advantage when we're competing for industrial, industrial, when we're engaging in industrial recruitment. One of the things that we get hit hardest on is, as many of you know, that's a money game. It's, it's very much a money game and it, you know, companies understand and have, have, have called on states historically to bring a lot to the table in terms of investment and public funds. But the other item that, that gets, that gets captured in that whole process is the technical workforce. And, and we here locally have struggled some because of the, the level of our technical workforce and that's why you hear the mayor talking a lot about our career tech program and, and driving that piece of our, 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 our education system. And you also hear me on occasion talk about the STEM, the sciences, technology, engineering and math elements, because if you, if you look at the latest, the latest state technology and science index, state of Alabama is at about number thirty-six, I believe, on that index. Mississippi is, is at the bottom and Arkansas, I think, is next to them at the bottom and, and, and again, it's a great opportunity for us to highlight the need for us to continue to drive math and science in our school system as well as career tech, because as you hear the mayor talk about often, not everybody's gonna be college-ready right after high school. And so career tech's an opportunity for those people who aren't college-ready to, to actually go out and, and be productive right out of high school. So again, wanna encourage those of you who can to get behind these programs and get behind your, your children and drive them in the areas of math and science, because that's the economy of tomorrow, okay? I, I'm one of those who was lucky enough to major in one thing and actually spend twenty years doing something else. Our children don't have that luxury now. They really don't have that luxury now. So again, let's, just please get behind them and drive them in the areas of math and science. The last thing I have is I am proud to announce that the, that, that, that my daughter, Sidney Williams, has, has success, has been successful in her bid for 10th grade class secretary. So, so I, I held off last week in announcing her candidacy on good advice from Ava, I think. She didn't think it was a good idea for me to mention it last week, but now that she's won, I think it's okay for me to bring that out, so I'm really proud of her and I, and I think. She's off, she's off to a good start, I believe. That's all I have.
Councilman Williams, I, I'll also add to your remarks about the Gaston City High School robotics, robotics team, last year they placed fifth. Out of fifteen teams, they placed fifth and in the competition and they're expecting to do better this year. So again, you know, we just encourage you to support them because we are certainly behind them.
Okay. Due to the Labor Day holiday yesterday, Monday's garbage route was being collected today. Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, the routes will not change, they'll be only regular day. If not anything else, I'll entertain a motion we adjourn.
So moved.
Let's speed it's adjourned.